Evening all, we will call this meeting in order. The record shows 6:31. Please rise to let pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call? Craig here.
I'm here.
Dolph here. Snyder here.
Ari here.
Ari is here.
Here is here. I do have in front of me proper verification of meeting notices being posted. Before we get further into the agenda, I'd like to hope you'll join with me in a moment of silence to observe the 9/11. Brings us right into the action of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
What's the move for approval on the agenda?
Second. We've got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven vote. Brings us to the action of minutes from the regular meeting from August 14th for the open session. Are there any noted changes to submit? Four additions.
What's the move for approval?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Dolph, to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna outstay him for most minutes because I was not present.
Okay, motion will carry on a 601 vote. Brings us to the action of minutes from the regular meeting, August 14th, in the closed session. Any noted changes or corrections?
Oh my gosh, motion accepted more than minutes from closed session on August 14th.
Second?
Second.
I would want to, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at it. There is, I'm noted to be present and to approve the motion, and I was not present for that meeting.
You're looking at the last one?
Yep, also by Schneider, motion carry on roll, call vote 60, so the count is correct, but my name is indicated there.
Okay, would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Yurgis?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for closed session, or if there are any, Mr. Yurgis.
Okay, just a second.
I will second that one.
All right, so motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Dolph, to approve with the noted correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I'll stay in the minute.
So the motion will carry on a 601 vote. Brings us to the minutes from the special meeting on August 28th, in the open session.
How many would like that motion to approve the special board meeting Wednesday, August 28th, the open session?
Is it a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Ms. Cumming, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I'll choose to abstain.
Motion will carry on a 601 vote. And finally, the minutes from the special meeting on August 28th, in the closed session. Any noted change?
How many would like that motion to approve the special board meeting, closed session from August 28th?
Seconds.
Yep.
All right, motion on the floor by Ms. Cumming, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I'll choose to abstain.
And that motion will carry on a 601 vote. Right along, we'll get into the board reports. First off, with student representatives of the board, I believe we have Marissa Stolpe here. You have the floor.
I know.
Amy.
Hi, everyone, I'm Eddie Palmi, I'm a senior, over with this year.
And I'm Marissa Stolpe, I'm a junior.
So we've gotten off to a pretty busy start to the school year. On the first day of school, we had our assembly, we did some staff introductions, we did a spirit stick competition where each grade tries to cheer the ladders, and then we had a lightning game between the student council. And then following after that, the next full day, we did class meetings where we discussed homecoming and who would be in charge of what, and then we also talked about the rules and expectations of the school year, and then the seniors had a meeting to discuss buying our caps and gowns for graduation. And then for the seniors, we began open campus this year. Seniors were able to qualify based on their ACT scores from last year, so either you had to beat, you're expected to score, or be like the top half of it, or score above a 24. And then this week, we started our meetings for our clubs. So Tuesday, we had our student council Patriots Club meeting, today we had our FFA meeting, Thursday, or tomorrow, we'll have the VAC and art club meeting, Friday we have FBLA, and then GSA was today at lunch. Next Wednesday, we will have a field trip to the American Players Center to watch a mid, or what you do about nothing. So all students in English too, and then all students in ATE Lit are eligible to go. And then some fun news about homecoming, the overall theme is musicals. The ninth graders have High School Musical, the sophomores have Mamma Mia, the juniors have Footloose, the seniors have Teen Beach, and the staff have Hamilton. The dress up days are as follow. Monday is pajamas day, Tuesday is rhyme time, where you pick a partner and then you each wear an outfit that rhymes with the other. Wednesday is Wednesday's We Wear Pink, where the theme is just to wear pink. Thursday is theme day, so each grade is supposed to dress up as their musical theme. Friday is marini gold or powder puff shirts. The homecoming dance is Saturday, September 28th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The theme is Waves of the Paradise. And then some other homecoming activities are float building, hallway decorating, board painting, martial volleyball during flex time, parade at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, and it's get night following, the school walkthrough parade with the homecoming court, and then our powder puff games. And then some fall sports updates. Cross country has had three meets so far, and it has been one of the best starts of our season in a long time. The boys team plays second at the Lodi Invitational, but the girls team got sixth. We're off to a great start to the season, and we hope to continue that success, and we have our home meet coming up, not this upcoming week, but the following week, as well as our conference meet. The football team has sadly started off as 3-0, but they hope to pick it up with a couple of tough conference games coming up. Although they have not won yet, they are playing well as a team. They will face Pointe at home this upcoming Friday, followed by Cambridge next week. And then the volleyball team is currently 1-1 as they go into their home game against New Polaris tomorrow. This game is also teacher appreciation night, where each senior picks a teacher that they'd like to especially recognize, and they hope to continue winning and play well in conference.
Any questions, board members? Thank you for that thorough report.
What was the third thing?
Moving right along, building a grounds committee meeting. There was a meeting yesterday, attended by two committee meeting, two committee members, excuse me, for the, Mr. Yurgis, Mr. Dolph.
Yeah, yesterday we met with point of beginnings on the design work for baseball, softball, football field, practice football field, and I'll actually be on. Page for page and plans that we discussed different fencing options, different infield, pretty much the whole aspect of designing baseball, softball, practice, and I'll do it. Discuss two different options for a skin infield versus a turf infield on baseball field, so we're gonna have that as alter, potentially alternative on the project. Pretty short meeting.
Any meeting ahead, Mr. Dolph?
Not really, we were only there for an hour. There were no surprises.
All right, any board member questions? Thank you both. We'll move right into administrative reports, and we will lead off with Mr. Bartel to talk on fundraisers and overnight field trips, senior survey, and the first day of school. You have the floor, Mr. Bartel.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, Eddie, for getting here over the first day of school, or the first couple, week and a half of school here, you did a great job explaining what the high schools come up to. There's nothing more to fill in besides the fact, and I've said this to staff, and it is all, it's in my, this is my eighth year, this is probably been the best start of this career we've had, just organizational wise, our staff was extremely prepared this year, the students are off to a really strong start, it's been a really good, positive start to the school year. So I really don't have much to add, since Eddie did a fantastic job of explaining that. If you wanna talk through the senior survey, give a little background about that, I believe each of you have a copy of it. Every May, in the middle, end of May, we survey, we've been doing this for years, the senior flaps, to give feedback on a variety of areas. So we wanna look at our classes, we wanna look at our school culture and our safety. So some of the best people to ask is people that are students that have been there for four years. So we look at that data, we assess it, and look at our practices, we make adjustments if needed. It's a pretty thorough report that you have in front of you, I'll just highlight a few takeaways, and if there are any questions that you have, please feel free to, you know, ask those questions. But the first page is a trend, it's a five-year trend of where our scores have been, and it starts with our departments. And the really neat thing is students rate their classes. Each department has excellent, good, fair, poor, or not applicable. As you can see, this past year, almost all of our departments have increased their average scores when you survey our seniors. So that was a really positive piece for our staff. And then some other pieces that come out of this survey is what has caused some troubles or interference with school. And we've had a decrease now, this past year, of classes poorly taught, classes being irrelevant, not feeling part of the school, school doesn't offer the courses I want. So those areas, I kind of bring back to some of the redefining readiness work that we're doing, really ensuring that there's a purpose for students being at school, and ensuring that they're in the right classes, and we have the right offering and opportunities for them. And then we also look at our school climate, so students feeling safe in the building, teachers having high expectations, and that, again, has also improved over the past year. So again, a lot of positives, I think something that we'll look at as staff is just firming up our classroom expectations. That was one thing that was kind of stagnant over the past two years, is just making sure behaviors are being followed around in the classroom, that would be a focus area. So our next step with that is just, again, I'll be meeting with departments, individual teachers, looking at these data points, and how we can improve that. The next, the next page, page three, is we wanna see where students are, what they're doing at their high school. And to break that down, about a third of our students go to a four-year school, a third a two-year, or tech school, and a third of our students either go to a work force, or they're undecided. So I think that's a direct reflection of, we do focus on ACT, AP courses, which we will continue to do, but we also have about 50% of our students not going on to college many times. So we wanna make sure we're hitting that. So that's just interesting, you know, thing to look at to make sure we're meeting our student needs. And then the rest of the pages are just broken apart, of the specifics of each department.
Star of the show.
My kid do me today as well. Like, we're just like breaks apart the departments, and you can see how many votes for each department, excellent, good, or fair, at each of the area's score. So you can see that in the rest of that report. Are there any questions about that senior survey?
Board members any questions?
Nope.
Well, you got, you got more questions at home, I think, than on that report.
I got my little number here, thank you. And then the next piece that I do wanna talk about is our overnight trips. So there's nothing really new with our overnight trips that we have had in the past that's different. The big trip that we have this year would be our softball trip for Florida, that we were planning to do last year, but just due to some funds and numbers, we accidentally dropped that off a year, we do that every other year. So we're doing that this year, we're planning to do that, and with that, there's no school missed in the plan, now we can't control if there's a delay or cancellation, but as of now, the trip will not miss any school days. And then we also have our normal FBLAs, state, national overnights, our FFA conventions, and then we do have a wrestling overnight that we have in late December. And then next school year, we have a tentative plan to do an international trip with our high school, I just have that on there as an FYI. If this all gets approved, this will get back on there next year, that's more of a, that's a plan we have to do every other year as well. So overnight trips, nothing really out of the ordinary, school is not being missed unless it's specifically for days that we can't control, like FFA and FBLA competitions. Questions of overnight trips?
Not hearing any.
Awesome, and then last, quick thing here is fundraisers, I know four pages, front and back. Again, I'm just gonna reference previous school years, there's nothing out of the ordinary that we are doing differently than we have in years past. A big thing was this, is just making sure that they're on years, that, that our groups, our grade levels, our activities, and our athletics, all put those fundraisers on there for the school year. So again, there's nothing really new, fundraising is revised at the high school, that we haven't done in the past. I'm not gonna go through it line by line, I can answer any questions if you have any about fundraisers though.
Any questions?
No, at this time, Sean.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Ms. Zeeman to talk about fundraisers on the first day of school. Ms. Zeeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am going to echo Sean a little bit and say that the start of our school year was extremely smooth. We had a great turnout for open house. I checked in with the teachers after open house, and every teacher had parents stopping in, they had only one or two students on their rosters that did not show up, so we were really pleased with that turnout. We tried something a little new this year for Chromebook distribution, and we think that that worked out really well, and lessened the time that our parents had to stand in line in the field house. So Chromebooks were handed out on the first day of class in student ELA classes, and IT was available to help them get logged in and everything, so we felt that that went really, really well. Yesterday, we had our first pep assembly and introduced our student council members. So the student body got to see all of our student council members, and they introduced the different pirate games that we will be having this year. They've added a couple pirate games, so this year we'll have 20 different activities that students will participate in over the course of the school year. So, any questions on the first week of school?
Nope, not hearing any.
Okay, so in your board packet, you will see the 5-8 fundraisers. Nothing is new here, except the addition of our eighth grade trip fundraising, and I do want you to make note that the date that's listed on your document should be the 17th, not the 16th. So Mr. Merkel is going to present various options to the parents if they are going to choose to do fundraisers to reduce the cost of that field trip, and I will get back to you as soon as I can with what they are choosing to do. They may choose to do a fall fundraiser and a spring fundraiser, but after the parents have some input on that, I will let you know.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on fundraisers?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeman. We'll move to Ms. Peekin to talk about fundraisers on the first day of school. You have the floor, Ms. Peekin.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I gotta say the exact same thing that, that Mr. Bartel and Ms. Zeeman just said, it has been an incredibly wonderful start to our school year. I could not be any more pleased with everything that's going on at the elementary school. What, I would have to say the same thing, all of my teachers had between one, like 100% attendance at open house, which was really exciting for us. Maybe one or two kids didn't show up, so we were really, really pleased with, with our attendance for open house. Some of the things I always ask people, tell me a little bit about what's going on, and I know that our kindergarten team and our 4K, little 4Kers are doing amazing this year, it's so great. And she was talking about how the 4KK pirates have been, already started picking up on school routines and rules by the end of the first week, with helping collaboration from OT and EC and speech, and our amazing Waterloo paras, we were able to have our newest pirates safely attending practice each school transition, going to specials and recess and lunch and every place they have to go. And she just wanted to say what an amazing support of EC and 4K team we have. Our art teacher was talking about the amazing stuff that's going on in our art room, middle schoolers in seventh and eighth grade digital arts class didn't have Chromebooks on day one, so they did a team building game, where they had to work together to share a marker and draw an image together. My elementary classes all had a scavenger hunt during their first class to find different things in the art room, and it was a wonderful first week. Kindergarten was talking about how we're all, and we're all doing this, reviewing, revisiting, and learning our new routines, that's really important at the elementary, and reconnecting with old friends and making new ones, and then listening to stories about school and the alphabet, and learning our names, and every, all of our new friends in our classroom. We continue to make that partnership with parents and talk about how Waterloo Elementary is a safe and kind school, and we're still talking about that this year, but one of the other things that we're adding this year, and what I'm asking parents to talk about with me, and to fill in on my survey that I send home to parents, is really that we believe sort of statement. So I'm asking parents to fill that in, and I'm getting some nice statements from parents about what we believe our school, you know, looks like and feels like here in Waterloo as well. So I'm really excited. The fourth grade has all of their positive quotes, and we have a really great bulletin board about things that we will do, and how we're really trying to create a mindset where we're making those really, those good choices. One of the things that I love is our little bulletin board that we have in the hallway that says, "We will try our best, persevere through challenges, find the good." So those are kind of our, that's what we're really, that's our focus here for the beginning of the school year, and I am incredibly pleased with everybody, everybody in the whole staff, it's really been great. Any questions? Oh, and my fundraisers are really just like pristine, you can see that, the only one that's different is the garden. Sometimes we sell pickets for parents and families to decorate our school garden.
Any board member questions? Nothing, so thank you, Ms. Peekin.
All right, thanks.
We will move to Ms. Armentraut to talk about the seclusion and restraint report, ES3 grants, community play group, and the first day of school. You have the floor, Ms. Peekin.
Wonderful, thank you, good evening, everyone. I have a lot to share with you this evening, and I'm going to present, I'm visual, so I'm gonna share my screen. All right, is that coming up for everybody?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we have a lot to celebrate in the special education department, and I'm excited to share four updates with you, starting with the annual seclusion and restraint report. So we'll begin there. If you look at the last column, it references our report for the last school year, and I am proud and happy to say that we, as a district, only had one incident of restraint for an elementary student that also receives special education services. Again, the last handful of years, we've seen decreases in our need to seclude or restrain students, and I really attribute that to our staff and the, and the training that they participate in, and some of those regulation strategies and relationships that they're able to build to help support our students. So I'm very pleased with that. Are there any questions specific to the, the report?
I, I have one. I'm, I'm looking here at 2013 to 2014, and there were 46, and now we're down to one. Are we, have we changed our, the way we count these things, or are we just that lucky?
Well, it's hard for me to speak to almost 10 years ago, because I'm not sure of the practices. I do know that when you look across Wisconsin, there are many, many districts that are identified as needing support from DPI due to the number of restraining seclusion. You know, we do have a smaller district and a, and a different population, but I would say that, again, we, three years ago, trained every single staff member in NBCI training, which is non-mitantic crisis intervention training, that's really about being proactive and understanding how to support students, especially when they're dysregulated.
Jeremy, there was a significant change in the law during that time as well, which is probably most of the reason why there's the change in numbers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The next update I'm going to share with you focuses on our Compass Care, which is our Medicaid and school-based services. So just to start, we give everyone kind of a, a general idea of what Compass Care is. School-based services is a program that allows public schools to bill Wisconsin Medicaid for necessary services provided to Medicaid eligible students, when they are provided by qualified personnel in public schools. So for our district, that includes over 40 staff members, they include our special educators, our speech language pathologists, our occupational therapists and physical therapists, our school nurse, our school psychologist, and our about 28 care professionals. The majority of these funds go directed back to, to the school district that provides the service. And so basically, what happens is our staff documents, attendant care services, which can include medical care, functional care, queuing, helping students with breaks and transitions, as some examples. And I wanted to just share how excited I am to, when you look at the last three years, this is our reimbursement amount, and so that you can see we have grown our reimbursement amount by quite a bit over the last three years. Again, I attribute this to improving our systems or gaining consent from families, the increased training for our special ed and care professional staff, and our processes, tightening up our processes for tracking data. So when I meet with Compass Care representatives, they are very impressed with how our district is doing, we still have room for growth, so we'll continue with that, but again, I just wanted to celebrate and share that, that information with you. Any questions on the Compass Care or school-based services?
Doesn't appear to be any.
Great. All right, then, third, I'd like to share with you, again, another exciting announcement. Last year, we applied for our ES3 grant, and didn't get it, only four schools in Wisconsin received the grant, and this year, I am excited to say that we did, it awarded the grant. The ES3 stands for enhancing social and emotional skills in students with IEPs. So Waterloo, again, was among three other, sorry, among four total districts, but with three other districts to be awarded this grant. So we get $56,000 over the course of three years. Our overall goal is to support a system for adult learning, to improve outcomes for students with individualized education programs or IEPs. This focuses on training a team to help coach staff, that include evidence-based improvement strategies and continuous data collection on student impact. Our current core team includes myself, Mrs. Peekin, our elementary principal, our elementary counselor, Tiva Ochoa, Kim Ryan, one of our special educators, Emma Beach, our occupational therapist, and Amy Schumann, our elementary Emma Beach, our occupational therapist, and Amy Schumann, our elementary reading interventionist. This goes hand in hand with support from DPI and CISA. And a crucial part of our process is applying the work that we're going to do in this grant to practices that are already in place, which would include PBIS, collaborative teams, our college and career readiness IEPs and our work in social emotional learning. More to come on the grant. We're just getting started and like I said, it's a three-year process. And year one is really just, you know, getting to know all of the the systems and and things involved with the grant. But we will keep you posted as we go. Any questions on our grant? All right. And the last celebration that I I'm excited to share with the board and community is our Waterloo Play Group, which is focused on really connecting the community and families with our school. And so right now, our play group is going to basically open up to the community the opportunity for families that have children from age birth to five, if they're not attending school already. And this invitation is to any caregiver with that child. And basically what they would be doing is they would be joining this amazing group of early childhood educators, which include our special ed teacher, occupational therapist and our speech language pathologist. And the mission is really connecting families, parents, caregivers with, you know, child development at that play-based, early learning age to to foster that community, that love for learning. They would focus on two, they're starting with two play group opportunities a month. Just again, to introduce to families the importance of reading and communication and language and play and just really enrich our opportunity to make that connection with community and families as early as possible. So we're excited to, October. And then there's some plans to do, to present to the board probably after a month's goal once we get a report on how that's going. Any questions on our play group opportunity?
Any questions? No questions.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the approval of the bill and vouchers. Treasures report, the superintendent listing of dispatchments through August thirty-first and the district receipt for the month of August. So are there any unanswered questions at this time with any of the three reports? Also move for approval of all three reports. All right, so motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Ms. Cummings. And that is a roll call vote.
Crave, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Dolph, and yes.
Schneider, yes.
All right.
Cummings, yes.
Here is yes.
Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Are there any legislative updates this evening? Not known. We move to announcements. I guess I'd like to extend a thank you to the teachers and the entire staff of the district after hearing about the smooth start to the school year from all three levels of administrators. So kudos to the staff, teachers and staff for for making that happen. Any additional announcements this evening?
Matt, I have one. I have a letter from Dan Ross Miller, who is the executive director for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. He sent the letter recognizing Charlie Crave. It says, congratulations, you have achieved level one in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards member recognition program. The WASB recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development through our member recognition program. Points are awarded to school board members for their attendance and involvement in various WASB programs. For more information, you can go to the WASB.org website. Charlie will be recognized on Wednesday, October ninth at the Region Twelve meeting at the Esquire Club in Madison. So hopefully he can attend and others can too.
It's the same day as our board meeting though. So we can address that.
Which one do you want to be at?
I'll let it down.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Crave.
Thank you. All right, we will move to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public input this evening? Two? Okay. We will do that. Just want to go over some ground rules real quick. We went to our, our newly put in place board policy. It's Owen sixty-seven point three. The board recognizes the value of the public comments on educational input, educational issues and the importance of allowing members to publicly express themselves. We do have some guidelines. Each statements can be made by participants, they'll be limited to three minutes of duration. You'll direct directly to the board, not individuals or others within the meeting. Not allow personal comments, personal attacks, et cetera. And I will intervene if we go that route. So before we open it up, when you provide public input, we just need your name so we can make record. And you'll have the floor for three minutes. So who would like to go first?
I will. Do I need to stand or can?
You can stand, you can sit and say your name and and we'll start you off.
All right, my name's Glenn Gordon.
You have the floor, Mr. Gordon.
And this is a voice of my concern about the softball, baseball complex. So as a community member with two daughters currently enrolled in the school and actively involved in athletics and co-curricular activities, I am concerned with this investment and the plan moving forward. Although I applaud the administration and the board for being proactive, trying to address the potential Title IX violation. This is a substantial amount of money that is currently being portrayed as the only avenue of recourse. No other option, to my knowledge, has been established. It's very difficult as a community member to make the jump from at-risk four or potential Title IX violation to investing two point four to two point eight million dollars that impacts the operational budget for the next twenty years. One has to ask, what are the other avenues of recourse? If there's an actual, if, is there an actual violation of Title X? If so, what are these impacts? How does this affect the decision? And in the absence of any of this information, one has to reasonably assume that there are other options between doing nothing and a two point four to two point eight million dollar investment. We just had a operating expense referendum in two thousand twenty-three. This leads me to ask, what is the projected maintenance and upkeep expense for these new facilities? How does that impact the future budget that will already be two hundred thousand dollars less due to a potential loan payment? And a quote in the Courier, Mr. Henning said, "It's my hope that the community will rally behind the pirate family and see that this is an opportunity to do better for the kids and give FEMA athletes the support they most definitely deserve." I can only speak for myself, but more transparency in this process, along with helping the community understand limiting factors and potential alternatives would go a long way in building that trust to help the community get behind these hard decisions. I want my girls to have a great experience as a student athlete and a brand new facility would be amazing, but not at the potential risk of foraging the future if there are other avenues, especially in this time when the budget is already stretched. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harman.
My name is Dave Hofford, the Parks Coordinator for the City of Waterloo. I'm here tonight to clear up some items that we spoke about in the paper and clear up questions that have been asked in my office over the last couple of weeks. I also wanted to be put on record during the school board meeting as that is where some of, some of these people are getting their information from. I take some issue with how the Parks Department has been treating included myself and that the entire conversation surrounding the matter, that my professional opinion has been considered biased by the school district, has been cast aside as some mattering that does not matter to the school district and staff, that I have been called a liar on multiple occasions. And I have the evidence of the items, photographic evidence and emails, that things are not being done correctly. The respect level that is given to myself and my position can't even get a phone call when a player drives into a carousel fence that I have to find out an hour later from someone that was renting one of our other facilities that witnessed it, not by someone on the coaching staff or supervising the team. To this day, two years later, I still have not been notified by anybody in the school district or representing the score of this matter. I take issue with what is being said to the public to push the agenda that you and your staff have set forth. Safety concerns now are brought up after thirty-five years of traveling down to the park. You can't use an ankle sprain as a foundation or the foundation is bad because everybody needs to assume assumption of risk. Field maintenance during gameplay is on the user, not the Parks Department. Improvements, fixed fences and other areas. You said you have done maintenance, you have swept dugouts, cleared ice, snow and ice, but do not do the necessary maintenance needs that may be done to get the field ready for the season. When you have done maintenance to the field, it was so you can get on the field early before the frost is out and has done more of a detriment to the actual care of the field. An example of this is when the school staff put ice melt on the field that trapped water from the melt of snow and ice above the frost line, refroze under the agline and raised the sand behind home plate six inches to where the Parks Department had to use the Bobcat to remove it and level it back out. I've been asked multiple times about monetary donations that have been offered to the Parks Department by the school board. There's never been a mention of monetary donations, for example, a donation of forty thousand, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand by somebody, twenty thousand by the WISO or two hundred thousand dollar donation that was offered by the school district. When talking about high school, how the high school players feel, let us all hear say it. And all I can do is say the same thing on the other side of the conversation because I have had conversations with players and former players. They tell me a different story. I've had different conversations with other Parks Departments in our area to compare our fields to them and how they feel. And they all say the same thing, our fields are some of the best in the area. There's been complaints that I treat the softball program differently than the baseball program, and that is not true. You are treated fairly. You're being held accountable for how you leave the fields for others and you think it's someone else's responsibility to take care of it after use. If anything, the baseball teams are treated differently. They have always taken care of the fields after use. Field A in the paper, it does not flood. It is the highest field in Fireman's Park. We have a sprinkler system on the baseball field for the infield grass to help it grow. It's not for the high school baseball program. It is for the Parks Department. As always, the infield grass will multiply die. Your staff has attacked the Parks Department and myself on social media. The last issue I have is we came to an agreement on a list of thirteen items you wanted to have done in Fireman's Park. It was set in the Parks Commission meeting and agreed upon that if the Waterloo Parks Department addressed twelve of those items, we feared to move forward. One of those items we're not going to do is red granite top dressing and making the field a softball-only field. You were given the reasons why we would not agree to that. Your coaching staff and administrative luxury agreed to those twelve items. The Waterloo Parks Department spent over twenty thousand dollars on Field A alone to address those issues, issues we believe did not need to be addressed. We have now spent over fifty thousand dollars on the softball fields this year to help and address a twelve item with the dugouts and fixing them up. We spent that money for you, money we did not have and put us into debt. And then we turn around and get a ran over in public in the paper. We have been fair and just to the school district. We have done what we can to address all this and it still isn't good enough for you, even though you said it would be. My final thoughts on this are this. All of what I am saying is public knowledge. It is in the Parks Commission meetings. I use transparency and facts and can be backed by those in the meeting minutes. I ask you to please quit using the Parks Department, myself, to push your final agenda. As a private citizen, I have a different opinion, but I must separate myself from personal thoughts and my position as a Parks coordinator. If you want your own field and you have the funds to build it, as a Parks coordinator, what right do I have to tell you different? It is your money and fields, then build it, but do it the right way. Again, I ask, please quit using the Parks Department or myself as your scapegoat for excuse to build it, be forthright, transparent and honest instead.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public input? People raise their hand.
I'm sorry. I do have some concerns, Jody Haslam. I guess I do have some concerns and I think that a lot of us have multiple, multiple questions. And at this point, it's my understanding that we are unable to discuss our questions with the school board due to legal reasons. So that's a concern to me. And I don't understand how such a big decision can be made when the community is not allowed to speak with the school board. The school board isn't allowed to discuss the situation with us. And I'm just wondering if this is being rushed into? So I guess I would just.
Jody, if you want to ask your questions, we'll, I'll make sure that I write them down and either I will get back to you or the board as soon as we can. We certainly want to answer your questions.
Okay.
So yeah, please go ahead and ask them. We just might not be able to respond to them tonight, but we will definitely get you the answers.
I guess one other thing is, I'm just wondering going forward if the school district could put out more statements about what's going on, where we don't have to rely on the Courier for information?
Did you have any specific questions you'd like to have on record? Does Mr. Crave need to say it or?
I want, I guess I want to know how deeply the violation has been looked into? Has there been research done? Has there been other complaints? Is it just one complaint? I guess I just, I don't think that everything is fair across the board. One example would be the discussion that was brought up tonight about the softball team going to Florida. I know the baseball team doesn't go to Florida to play baseball. So I, there's just little things like that, like everything is not always fair. I don't, I don't know that our town is able to support such a large facility. I think it would be wonderful if it could. Have we had a chance to look into grants or is there funding available through the state, through the federal government to help pay for this? Or has that information been put out there anywhere that there's been research done on that? Is it all going to be up to the taxpayers? I think those are things that people want to know. I think with school safety being such a big thing right now in the news that it's concerning to me that we would spend so much on a sports facility when we have fields available in the park. And if something were to come up where we would need equipment, we would potentially need resources in our school, would we not have the funding? Would a referendum be turned down because all of the monies would be already invested into the fields? I just, I just don't want to see our students miss opportunities in the future because we have so much money wrapped up in to a sports facility where other things would then have to be missed.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Lori, Lori. Last year, Kirsten Schuster got some quotes for a softball and baseball field on school grounds. And the quote, I was looking through my phone trying to find the the quote, but it was two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand for a baseball field and two hundred and fifty for a softball field. So I don't know how, where, how we got up to two point eight million. So that was my question.
Okay.
It'd be nice if we could answer your questions right now. Maybe that'd be helpful. Your board doesn't want to. They've voted.
I'm sorry, I'm going to step in, the board approved the policy and we're adhering to our policy.
You're exactly correct.
That's what we're doing.
That's our policy.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, my name's Ken Thomas. I'm here to propose a sports complex. As was just stated, there was a study done if there was a softball diamond that needs to be built to meet the needs of Title IX. Why would we build that softball diamond? First, it'd significantly lessen the money. Then what a sports complex is. Why do we need a new sports complex? Why do we need a new sports complex? We just built a new gym. That doesn't need to be closely utilized as the taxpayers were promised at the time that was built. Funding for the sports facility would require two million dollars. What are you going to have to cut to make that payment? And schools, projects, similar to the cities, there isn't much you can do. You can have to cut into education. I thought we were an educational facility, but apparently, after we built this gym, and we are now talking about sports facility, we're not educational, we're sports money. We're into sports. Education is going to become secondhand, apparently, the way I see these things. And the only way you're going to be able to make this payment, because the city's not going, your tax base is not going, and my guess is your enrollment is not going, is you're going to have to come to another referendum. And you're going to do that after that. You're going to go off and build this whole sports facility, and then turn around and tell the taxpayer, you either approve a new referendum, or we can't afford to have school, all because of sports facility. Ask me to take the weapon away from your purpose here, and that is education. I think you can get by very nicely with a simple softball diamond and meet your requirements. I don't know why that hasn't been looked at, and apparently you can't answer the question because you developed a policy to prohibit yourself from being asked and being forced to answer the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quimby.
Scott Quimby, I'd like to just bring you back on Mr. Gordon, Ms. Hasly, and Mr. Thomas's thoughts here. I was at the initial park board meeting, or the parks meeting, when this is all addressed, and I'm not going to claim to be some Title IX expert. I'm not sure of the validity of that, if there is or there isn't, but it seems to me that this could all go away by just offering the simple donation to the city parks under the guise that this is not exclusively a high school diamond, very similar to what they did with the Spolensky Field. They received a donation that's earmarked specifically for the baseball field. That money was then put into that field. I'm not sure that that's been researched. I know that at that parks meeting that night that that was discussed, and I thought that was a possible viable option that they were going to look into, but next thing you know, we have a two point seven million dollar field complex coming. So I feel like if you could find a donor, that the community would raise some money, and then maybe that donor would match. If you get anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and donate it specifically allocated to that field for improvements, the city has to honor that allocation. And I feel like you can seriously find another alternative measure, like Mr. Gordon was talking about. I think that there's something that has not been looked at, or if it has, it hasn't been made public and transparent enough. I just, I wanted to know if the board, that would be my question, is if the board has looked into the feasibility of raising funds, allocating them specifically for field improvements under the guise, knowing that that's not a high school diamond alone, similar to the way Spolensky Field is, that it would be a multi-use field continuously, but improvements could be done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I lost everyone, but. Anyone else here?
Name's Mike Piers. I moved to Waterloo about...
Sorry, Mike Piers?
Yep. Moved to Waterloo about three or four years ago. I don't know all the numbers and all this other stuff, but I really think the school board needs to take a hard look, walk around this school, see the things that need to be fixed right now, and then look at the maintenance of the school. I'm not criticizing anybody's work. I'm not saying people aren't doing their jobs, hope they have a hard time maintaining what we have. We do not have the capability of maintaining anymore. I think it is, money can be spent in better places, and I agree with a lot of other people, this is an education facility, not a sports facility.
Good. So thank you.
What was your name? I'm sorry, I got...
It's Mike Piers.
Thank you, I was dealing with the computer, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to see, provide input? All right, at this time, I'm going to close for public input, and we'll move into our board agenda.
We have to ask, we have to ask if anyone on the computer would like to speak?
Is there anyone attending virtually that would like to add information or speak? All right, I'm going to close the meeting to public input, and we'll move into new business. Action item A is staff positions. Listed in your informer packet are a number of positions. We have two resignations, and the rest are employment positions. Any questions in regards to what's been presented in your informer packet? Looks like a number of par professionals, systems administrator, middle school volleyball coach, another volleyball volunteer, boys' basketball coach, and captain's crew.
For the MS volleyball coach, is she going to do seventh and eighth grade?
No, we already had another middle school coach, Casey Reed, so, Christine Stacey and Christine.
I'd hope to approve the staff positions as presented.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve the positions as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So motion will carry, I will abstain on a six oh one vote. Brings us to action item B, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five overnight field trips. Heard information prior. It's recommended that they're approved as presented for overnight travel. Any discussion, board members, or questions in regards to the overnight trips as presented?
I'd just like a point of certification related to the field trip. So I see the softball trips planned to go to Florida with a total per student cost of three thousand, or total cost per student three thousand, with student cost being two thousand, and the remaining thousand per student would be coming from...
From the student activity fund, which is fundraisers. Yeah, and/or, I think there's some student contribution to also. Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the overnight field trips as presented.
Go ahead.
Come in just a second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame to approve as presented, seconded by Ms. Cummings. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh one vote. Brings us to the fundraisers for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Any questions there? We had presentations from each administrator in regards to that, but it sounds like we have some additional information to share?
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we do get phone calls and emails from time to time from people that are not happy with fundraising efforts in the district. Certainly can't argue that it goes to kids, and I think all the causes that you have in front of you tonight are worthwhile causes, and people work very hard, and whatever they fundraise certainly doesn't have to come from tax dollars, but there is another side to it in that people get tired of being asked. I would recommend that you approve the fundraisers tonight, but it's just something to be conscientious about to not over-ask the community for fundraising, because we see it as an alternative to, you know, avoid any other financial means.
Any other discussion on fundraisers?
I would say the biggest thing with fundraisers is maybe if there is a fundraiser, it's told what it's going to. So like, we just had a fundraiser for volleyball, and we know a couple things, but my husband's like, what else? What is this going to? We raised so much money. So I want to ask that question. So where's, you know what I mean? So maybe when they are doing fundraisers, they put it out where their, where the funds are going to go if they raise X amount of dollars. It'd be nice to have that information included, because a lot of the time it's not.
I agree.
So if it's the teachers asking, or if it's the sporting events or sports, I would say have them have that a part of the fundraisers.
Okay, is there any other discussion regarding fundraisers? Also a move for approval? Motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fundraisers as presented. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh one vote. Action item D, the seclusion and restraint report, which was already presented, noted that we had one incident this past year of record. Any further discussion in regards to the seclusion and restraint report?
I don't have any further discussion on that, but congratulations, Michelle, on your grant. It's an amazing opportunity for us.
I would agree. Kudos.
Thank you so much.
I'd hope to approve the seclusion and restraint report as presented. Cummings, just a second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the seclusion and restraint report as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh one vote. All right, action item E, the update on policies of the quadruple zero through the nine thousands. There's a couple. Any questions in regards to the two hundred and fifty-plus pages of updates?
Yeah, so just to reiterate to the board, and Scott Brown from Neola sort of warned us, he said, you know, when you take and you go through the policies, the whole packet for the first time, there are a couple updates that come out while you're doing that, and so this will catch us up on the last couple updates. There's a hundred and fifty-seven policies, I think. The majority of them are just small technical changes, dates, words, small, small changes that don't really affect much. But there is the Title IX policies that are in there tonight, as well as a couple other ones that you have for approval, all of which have been gone through with Scott. And so going forward, you'll see an update about every six months, so we'll get our next one after Christmas sometime.
Is that going to be something that we might want to put on the agenda in the future, is to discuss exactly what we've brought up, that being able to communicate through, answer questions with that? Is that something that we need to revisit? Maybe I know we've already went through that policy, but maybe we come back to it because there is some concern?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, now Bill's mentioned it, and you're bringing it up, about the public comment policy. Certainly you approved it one way, but that doesn't mean you can't change it anytime you want. You just have to put it on the agenda and change it, right? So, so if you want to change that, then we just have to do it.
I mean, I think it would be smart to have that discussion and go through the current policy, how it's written, and see, maybe we look at what other schools are doing as well, and public comment, if we can maybe have an option to be able to ask, answer the questions that are being asked by the community.
Yeah, so just because Neola isn't presenting it as an update doesn't mean that you can't look at it anytime you want.
And I would say we should take that to the policy committee, and probably look at the board communication policy at the same time if we address that. Is there anything we should note on the Title IX policies? Mr. Henning, I don't know if there are any passed, is the federal government telling us they have to be?
I believe the items were shared with you at the last meeting, but I certainly didn't answer any questions. I mean, it's mostly out of your hands, as you probably are well aware, as the language is pretty specific about what your requirements as a district are to do. You get some say in timelines and who you designate as the coordinator, and who hears appeals, and who's the decision makers, and those kinds of things, but largely it's outlined in federal law, so.
We don't think that we should kind of let them know what's going on. With the Title IX changes?
In terms of the policy...
Yeah, we had the discussion in closed session, right? So they're all not aware of what's going on.
Yeah, so there was a federal change to the Title IX policy, and Michelle gave a big presentation on it at the last meeting. It'd be hard for me to sum that presentation up in just a short, but basically, the protection of classes has changed, and so now we have a different requirement as a district to protect some additional classes under the Title IX policy. So, you know, I think the comment was maybe there's four hundred pages there, so I would invite you to go out and read as much as your hearts are content.
We don't think that we should kind of be specific with it. Mind if I?
Not anything.
I'd say it's a board discussion, but if you want to share with board members.
Is there anything we shared within front of them, or are we afraid to talk about it in front of them?
We're not afraid to talk about anything, other than if we're going to follow our policy. It's not an open conversation.
I think so, it was.
You can share your feelings or thoughts.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, your federal government and its infinite wisdom has decided to make a rule change. So what Title IX basically says is you can't discriminate based on sex for government entities that take public funding, of which a public school would be part of. And that happened back in nineteen seventy-two, when there have been a bunch of amendments to that law over the course of time, none of which are terribly significant for what the rule change is. What's significant about this right now, though, is it's not a change of the law, it's an interpretation of the law by the federal government, which they call a rule change. And what they've essentially said is, if you are a boy who thinks of yourself as a girl, and you want to use the girl's locker room or the girl's bathroom, you can further remember. If one of the girls in the locker room or the bathroom complains about the boy coming into the bathroom or the locker room, they are the one that are in violation of Title IX. They are the victim. And they're trying to force your board right now to adopt this policy as their own. Now, there is an injunction that's been put in place so far. It's another thing that we're not telling you about. Any school that has a member of Moms for Liberty, that has a student that's one of the kids of the parent of Moms for Liberty, that goes on the website and checks a box, you can be part of the injunction. Just so happens that I did that this morning. So once the new edict comes out for Moms for Liberty, we're going to be probably okay in the middle school, intermediate school, which I understand will be the same thing, and high school, because that's where all I have kids. If any of you have kids in elementary school, you need to go on the Moms for Liberty website, and you register your name. After you've been registered, you need to go back and pick that you want, if you have an elementary school student, that you want your student included in the state. And basically what it does is the US Supreme Court has said any of the schools that are part of this state, the board is not going to be forced to adopt these rule changes. They can voluntarily do it. And what you don't know is about a third of the districts in the state right now have already done this. Third haven't, and they're subject, if they're not part of the state, they're subject to having, in our case, to be a million dollars in money taken away from the district. So when you go to vote this fall, understand that your vote actually does matter. It matters who you vote for. If you vote for the current administration right now, vote's going to be the law of the land, absent a ruling from the US Supreme Court otherwise. And right now, all they did was put a state on it. So all they said was, you can't enforce it while we're letting the process go through the courts, because the objection to it from the Moms for Liberty folks are essentially saying, well, wait a minute, we have a legislature out there, people that we vote for to vote on these laws, aren't they supposed to be the ones changing the law, or interpreting the law, or making the law? I mean, you can't just rewrite the law, right? Well, that's what the Supreme Court's eventually going to hear. Well, that's what the Supreme Court's eventually going to hear, probably a year and a half from now. So that's what this is. And by the way, if you're shocked right now that nobody told you this and outraged, you should be. You will. And anybody that wants an answer to what's been discussed previously, if you want to stay after tonight, outside in a parking lot, the local Piglet Library, I'm happy to do that. We have to answer all your questions tonight. I just can't do this one.
Any other discussions regarding the policies for the zero through the nine thousands? Looks to be the rescission of 10 policies and the aforementioned additions or changes. I'll make a motion to approve the policies, quadruple zero through the nine thousands. For a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the updated policies like quadruple zero through the nine thousands. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, motion carries on a seven oh vote.
Is that seven oh or six one?
I didn't hear anything.
I didn't, I just said here, Bill.
Yeah.
Motion will carry on a six one vote. All right, brings us to action item F, the 2023-2024 budget amendments. It's recommended that amendments be approved. The Heart Baker Tilly R.I. firm will present in the audit in December. Again, we'll be required by law to go through this process. Any discussion in regards to the budget amendments for the 2023-2024 budget?
I have a question. Fiscal year is already, that, that ended in June, right?
Yeah.
And we're changing the budget for last year now?
We have to publish in the paper the line items that finished differently than what we set at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so, well, in my day job, we do things a little differently, so, and I'm new here. We, we do this every year, change the budget after the year is already completed?
Yeah, do it until after the audit is finished.
Okay, so we don't just say it's over or under budget, we change the budget to match?
Correct.
That is different. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
I have a motion to approve the budget as amended for 2023 and 2024.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the 2023-2024 budget amendments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion will carry on a six one vote. Brings us to action item G, the Boys Soccer Co-op. It's presented Waterloo is looking to join the Cambridge Field Boys Soccer Co-op for the fall of 2025. This is the same agreement that we approved with the Cambridge Field Soccer, Girl Soccer, excuse me, which was approved in March. Any questions regarding the Boys Soccer Co-op?
Cummings will make the motion to approve the Boys Soccer Co-op.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the Boys Soccer Co-op as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Action item H, finalize bid documents on the softball and baseball. So, uh, was presented already on yesterday's meeting in regards to the Building and Crowds Committee, which could be summarized with a scope of work clarification was conducted on a plan review. Uh, and was sent back to point of beginnings to, uh, to just give revised bids and provide, provide alternatives as we try to assemble the final cost of said construction of the aforementioned improvements to the school. Uh, I guess an example provided, you know, deciding on Massey dugouts or Pence dugouts, et cetera. None of that's been decided, uh, until we get information. Any board discussion on this item?
How can we finalize the bid document and take action on it when we don't see any bids? We don't have any bids?
So you're approving the documents that you will give to contractors to then return pricing to you?
I believe you have a handout, supplementary handout for the small version of the finalized plans. And on page, it's listed as page two or three, this table in the back, there's the list of alternate bids that are going to be obtained. And again, the scope of work is clarified so that the contractor can take the bid and get comparative quotes from multiple.
I'm just gonna venture in here because I have not been able to participate in this session on this topic. I had work coming in and then had to be out of town. But I don't think that we're moving forward in the right direction. I, I asked six months ago for our community listening session on this topic so we could engage with the community. I think we've heard loud and clear from our public input that there are concerns about this project. I think we're going too fast with too big of a price tag.
And I second what you said Susan last meeting, and I said the same thing. I think we need to slow down, um, you know, and bring this back up. Uh, I asked for it to be back on the agenda, which it is not. And so I, I don't, I, I'm not gonna take action and finalize bid documents because I don't think it should move forward right now. I think we need to slow down. I think we need to ask the community, get the community involved because we're definitely hearing from them. They're speaking out. And I know Charlie said the last time that we didn't get anybody to show up, but people are showing up now. And people are talking and.
They don't even know the whole story yet.
And so we need to, we need to slow our roll.
I'd say they don't know the whole story because we have to have them engaged.
I, I concur. I concur. I don't disagree with you. I've invited over and over and over and over again. I want to have an intervention. I, I, I just assume that I have a discussion with people actually that disagree with me. I've even said I can be persuaded otherwise.
So you're proposing we have a take no action, have a public hearing?
I would take no, that's a great idea.
I'm making a motion that we reconsider our authorization to provide funding for this, um, project in its entirety.
I would second that motion.
We'll call both.
Okay, hold on. So, the, the action item we're talking about is the finalizing of bid. I believe we're gonna get to another item here, action item J, which may more be suited towards what you're speaking in regards to. So, uh, if you don't want to move forward with the finalization of the bid documents, uh, we should either table that or we move along without taking action. And yes, we've got three items here that are very closely, um, aligned. So is the board not looking to take any sort of action regarding the finalized bid documents on the softball and baseball? Is that a safe? And I'm full board, huh? Mr. Crave, thoughts?
Part of the reason we moved it up is so it'd be payable a year from now. But still, it's money, we're not about it. Where we really got into the weeds on it is the need for earthmoving because there's only so much room available. Some of it goes to the quality issue as well. So, definitely, the community needs to be on board. I don't know about that.
Any further, Ms. Kwame?
No, I think that we need to take pause and regroup and engage in conversation.
Mr. Dolphin?
I agree.
Mr. Ferry?
I think everybody knows where I stand.
Ms. Cummings?
I think people do. I think, uh, for item H and I, I think we table or take no action. And then J, I think we, um, go to the vote that Ms. Kwame and Farinae and we, we, we table it until we can get the community involved.
Mr. Yurgis?
Yeah, I agree with them. One more thing on that. I think we got time to slow down a little bit. I mean, here in the middle of September already, I don't think you're gonna address it be going much before it freezes out. I think we have time to slow down a little bit and get to it.
Okay. My input would be, we've talked about this for almost a year already. So to say we haven't talked about it, I don't think is accurate. I can certainly appreciate that there are people that are not on board with moving forward.
It's been the last really six months that we have. And we really have, um, when Ms. Kwame asked to have the community involved, it was, we don't need to, it's just plans, it's just plans, it's just plans. And then all of a sudden, it was like, it's a done deal. And we're, and everyone's like, wait, what?
Yeah, I mean, July, I couldn't have been more clear in the conversation in July that what we were making the motion for was to seek it out right now. And by the time I came back from vacation in August, we approved 2.7 million dollars.
Correct.
And so, uh, there was a huge jump from month to month.
Okay.
And it's, I guess I'm not clear what we're trying to say here. Are you, you were saying that I did something or?
No, no, I just, no, I'm not, I.
If you want to have a community session, make a motion and have a session.
Or, um, we're, we're not wanting to approve this.
The motion, the motion on, the motion on the floor is to, is to rescind the authorization for funding for this project in its entirety. That's my motion. I have a second.
And I second the.
Now I think we need to vote.
I'm not aware of a, a motion to have a funding. Later on the agenda.
But there's a motion to rescind, and then we need a second before we can vote on it.
I, I.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so we have a motion on the floor.
Clarify what that motion is, please.
He, he just said he wants to rescind the.
So everyone's clear on what we're voting on?
Please make a motion to rescind all of the funding for this project in its entirety. The project being the baseball.
Baseball softball complex.
Okay, so Mr. Ferry has put a motion on the floor that's been seconded by Ms. Kwame. In its current state, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so is everyone clear upon the motion on the floor? If anyone wants, please do a roll call.
Can I ask for some clarifications, Matt?
Yeah, by all means.
One, we have authorized a wetland delineation, soil pourings, and private line location to the tune of 15,500-ish?
Well, both of those are committed to.
Are we gonna not pay those bills?
We'll pay them. Fair enough. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, with the exception of the bills that we would have already, that we've already authorized. I was, we're gonna, we're gonna pay the bills that we've already authorized.
Sure.
Okay, and still.
To exceed, let's do a math to exceed number.
And then, I, I wasn't aware that we authorized any funding. I know we set a budget and we approved moving forward with a project, but we never authorized any funding that I'm aware of. And that was the idea of the resolution for tonight. So if I can just offer some, some guidance, you know, here you want to slow down and back up and involve the community, which I think is totally fine, completely understandable. So if we want to proceed with the motion, I think that's fine. I don't know that we've authorized any funding, but the record can stand that we're not moving forward. But then I would recommend that you give the administration direction on what you want us to do going forward so that we can be real clear that we're meeting every board member's wishes.
Is there anyone else clear on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Mr. Yurgis?
Are we gonna all take this a different step, or are you gonna stop on the period?
Well, my, my vote is to stop on the period until.
I, I think we got another.
Until, until we have more clarification.
Clarification, that we have a public, a public hearing because we still have to address this Title IX complaint. We can't just stop this. So are we having public hearings? Where are you going?
All I'm saying is, I don't want to spend the money on the project.
He is saying, let's stop.
Let's just table, let's just table it and have a public hearing.
I'm not gonna, I, the thing is, we already authorized the project. I want to deauthorize the project.
Correct. Want to deauthorize it and then have.
My understanding is that also included funding, but I, I understand.
The communication and the.
That's, that's fine, but I want to deauthorize the project in its entirety, except for costs that are already incurred.
How are we gonna deal with that, Ryan, if I'm asking you?
Well, we can discuss that at, at an actual board, or in public.
And we can discuss.
Which is what we should have been doing from the.
That's why we should table it and have a full session.
But that, it doesn't say title, it doesn't say because of the Title IX complaint. This is, he is.
We have, you guys, we have a motion on the floor, we need to vote on this.
Correct. He is saying to remove all the, the funding right now. And yes, I understand, so then you have to say, we will go ahead and put it back on the agenda to discuss the Title IX complaint and what we can do for that complaint. That's, it has to be put back onto the agenda to know how Brian can move forward and what we are going to do, get the community involved, get this done. It all has to go back on the agenda. What he is wanting to do is stop the project right now, stop it. Not table it, stop it. And then it can always be put back on the agenda if we come up with a resolution that fits. Is that right, Bill?
So we're planning to have a closed session meeting?
No. No. The last thing I want to do is have another closed session.
I think he wants it open.
I want it open. The whole part, how we got here is by closed session meetings.
How, how are you wanting? I'm not gonna argue.
Well, it's, it's literally everything. And I would argue that our whole reason that we're here is we went at this from, from, trying to solve this through closed.
I understand what you're saying.
The entire time we went along with this discussion, so that's why they didn't know. And so the last couple of meetings, when we finally had to approve funding for it, and all of a sudden, surprise, here's the open session. That's what happened.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying that you existed at all. I'm just saying that that's why I'm so vehement about not having a closed session about it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. To clarify that motion, it's to rescind moving forward from the project that's been presented and approved previously. But we will authorize the funding of costs incurred to this point. Clear?
Clear.
So a roll call?
Yes.
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 Nope. No?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries on a five-two vote. So move forward here on the contract with Point of Beginnings. We're not going to move forward with project. Clear, we're not going to move forward with Point of Beginnings design work. Minimum at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to take action upon this item? Moving down the line, action item J, resolution authorizing borrowing of not to exceed 2.25 million dollars for de-issuance and sale of general obligation on the story notes. As aforementioned here, is there anyone who wishes to proceed on this one? That brings us to discussion item K, the WASB Region 12 School Board Meeting. As already mentioned, we have a board member who we recognize at said meeting, being held on October 9th at the Esquire Club, starts at 6:00 PM, pre-meeting workshop at 4:30, open to all board members. Refresh my memory, Mr. Yurgis, are there any special requirements for registration?
No, if you just let us know, we'll go ahead and get you registered and help you get directions to... They usually do a really nice job with their pre-session workshops and there's always a nice speaker at the regular session as well. So I would have encouraging people to go to this event or board meeting. And you can see all the other schools in there, which you are fairly recognized.
And you can go to a different session, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
But our sessions conflict with ours.
Yeah, if that date doesn't work, there's a whole list of ones that you can go. And some that aren't that far away, so.
I believe it's presented in your school magazine, all board, school that all board members should receive. Okay, or let the administration know and let me to register. We do, if we have a number of people that are going to go, it isn't conflict with October 9th regular school board meeting, so we have to address that. Any further discussion? All right, discussion item L, the curriculum medium, meeting, excuse me, is looking to get something on the books for Ms. Cummings, Ms. Kwame, and Mr. Farley.
What works for you guys? You ended, you said, you put it in there for November?
Prior to November.
Prior to November.
It'd be nice to handle it at our November board meeting, which means you'd have to have your committee meeting in front of that. We certainly can push it back to December if we have to, but it's nice to always have it done by November.
What about like the 16th, Wednesday?
Works for me.
Works for me. So sporting events does.
Do you have a time?
Christine, Sean, do those times work for you?
We're talking about October 16th.
I didn't hear the times that were listed, I wasn't able to hear it. Can you just repeat it a little louder?
October 16th we're looking at.
What time?
We have five works.
That works for me.
Yeah, that works.
Five and 16th.
Yep, okay, perfect.
Oh, wait a minute, no. I think I...
That whole day doesn't work?
Yeah, I'm in West Bend at a claims conference. Like literally the 16th through the 17th.
What about like the...
I could do the day before then. I don't know, I'm actually, so it would be either Friday that week or Monday that week.
I mean, I could do the 14th, that's the one that's there. I could do, I could do Monday, the 14th. Can you do the 14th? 14th, does the 14th work?
You know, it's not also, I mean, they... So if you want to do the 16th, I think that's way better.
14th, that's fine. 14th is fine. Does the 14th time for you? Does the 14th work for you, Christine?
Yes.
Sean?
Yeah, no, that works for me.
So 10:14 and 5:00 PM, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you all, that brings us down to adjournment.
No, Matt, I was looking for a meeting on September 30th. I corresponded with the board the email regarding that meeting and we have three or four people already that can't attend. So could we find another date? That was the latest that we could possibly hold that meeting. So we would have to go in front of that somewhere.
We have the tax levy meeting on the 23rd.
Isn't that the 23rd?
I have it on my calendar for the 23rd.
It's listed on the agenda as the 28th.
The 28th is a Saturday, so...
It's probably not the 30th.
It's the fourth Monday. Yeah, the annual meeting that I wanted to hear. That might make for a late meeting.
Right. Hard to be done at a set time.
Student one? I have any day with the 26th that week.
So can anybody do 24th or 25th?
And that's also a homecoming week, so...
Perfect.
The administrators have commitments at skate nights and parades and...
Is there a day next week?
Monday.
16th?
No, I have a...
17th?
17th, no.
Tuesday?
Tuesday. That's 17th.
Yes, I can do it.
You can't?
Tuesday, the 7th.
The 7th next, Tuesday.
I should do that.
Yeah, I should.
We can get six out of seven, so unless, unless we can get seven out of seven, 18 to 19.
Sean, we would have to get our notice out tomorrow then in order to be compliant. So you and I can work on that.
So 9/17, maybe also at the time of 6:00 or...
Yeah, and that's providing drug rights available, so.
Got it. All right, that concludes everything. Is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second? Okay, a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Kwame to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you everyone.